I'd like to call the October 16th meeting of the Pl- of the Brainer Plan Commission to order. Roll call, Mr. Krambek.
Duval.
Here.
Norwood. Peterson.
Here.
Stangline.
Here.
Gorham.
Here. All right. Dave, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Is that my job?
It is your job now. You did so well last month.
My pledge would be to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. What about you?
Trying to lose your job, is that what you're trying to do?
No.
No, no.
Been since kindergarten doing that, it's, you know.
They get kind of mushy after a while, don't they? All right. Looking for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All right, looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Looking for approval of the minutes from September 18th? Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go. We are right on to item six, unfinished business. We're going to discuss, discuss section 514 dash, 515 dash four, general building development and design standards. James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the last meeting, the planning commission reviewed design standards proposed by the community development department. Kind of went through each one of them one by one, took some motions when needed. So staff based on some of those recommended changes. Also did add a couple others that I'd like to discuss tonight as well. Highlighted those sections of what we, what we really changed in here. So figured we'd go to the actual ordinance that I began drafting here and kind of go through each one of these highlighted sections, kind of one by one, spending a little time on maybe some of the ones that need some more discussion. And then if there's any other things that I missed at the end, or we can call attention to it, you know, as we're going through this, we certainly can do that, and we'll go from there. So the first one, this kind of came up in the last month here with the accessory structure garage sizes in the rural living zone. So typically rural living zone, you could potentially have, you know, larger pole barns that are built. They're large lots, or they're typically going to be at least one acre, if not larger, and could have certainly some agricultural uses as well. So wanted the planning commission take a look at this, as this did come up in the last month here, about eliminating the wording that would be up to 35 feet, but may not exceed height to the principal structure. So I think this one, because this would be new, have a discussion and get planning commission's recommendation on this.
Did we not discuss this in past meetings?
We did not.
We didn't touch this one?
Yeah.
Well, open up for discussion. Any thoughts, any reactions to it?
Would this, would this only be for rural living?
It would only be for rural living.
Okay.
Yep.
But any strong feelings any which way?
I think it looks, I think it's fine.
I think I can probably live with, live with that. James, I think we're good, if you want to move on.
Okay. So the next few were based on the no further than two feet beyond facade into the front yard, front facade into the front yard or the side corner, so made that change based on the recommendations. It's what we had discussed before. Any questions on, on that portion of it?
We don't want to bring that back up.
I think we want to, if we're happy now, let's, let's stay happy. The consensus to stay happy? We're going to let it lie?
So, next-
I think we're, they were good.
I think we're good on that one. So next one is 25,000 square feet for the traditional neighborhood two district. That was discussed last time and agreed upon. The next portion, design standards for the facade. This is one we did have discussions about potentially looking at that wild card. I did have some conversations with Commissioner Duval as well. He did some research, kind of went around some of our neighborhoods to look at it. So the, the last part is what we had discussed. Other design elements may be approved by the zoning administrator such as a chimney roof design, and angles, window patterns, dormer, dormers, corbels, et cetera. And then the one part that is maybe a little bit different from the last one, we had talked about incorporating two of the following design elements. After discussions and taking a look at pictures, wanted to take a, wanted to have a discussion on if it's a two-story structure, so you have more of a face to it. You know, could there possibly be a requirement to have three design elements? We did take a look at, you know, some, some two-story structures that probably could have used another design element. So up for consideration, and certainly would take planning commission's recommendation on this.
Let's start with Mike, if he actually did some research and poked around. Any conclusions you drew, you drew from your research?
Well, I, I think, you know, the, adding the three is a simple, a simple administrative tool for staff that, that doesn't send people around. You know, it becomes, it becomes part of the, particularly with the steeper roofs, you, you end up projecting more space up and it becomes, and we had a conversation at the last meeting about sort of the, the 50/50 siding kinds of stuff, and where it, it starts to lose its, its effectiveness in creating something of interest. And, and so, you know, another design element there would be helpful in being able to do that, and I think James used the, the wild card to, to sort of bait the imagination of, of someone that's proposing something here to say, you know, these are sort of the ideas and the open-ended, et cetera, to, to, to create the conversation at the desk down, downstairs. To me, adding it would, would help on those instances, but other folks may, may have different ways of approaching it. So.
Dave, any thoughts?
I do have some thoughts. In fact, even as I was driving in today, kind of driving through the city and working around and everything, you look at all the different areas and the planning commissions that have done stuff. We're in the process of changing what the last one did a little bit. And it'll happen again for two years, five years from now, as things change and progress. And I'm on the opinion that I think the diversity, diversity is good. I don't think we need to mandate everything that's done. That would be mine. The less we have to mandate, I believe, the better. I think you can do, there's simple designs, you look at some Cape Cod's, have one color and a black fascia, for example, or stuff. And, and you can make houses look sharp with just color changes, not having to throw in other things. That, to me, then at that point, we're designing that house for them. And I just don't feel that the right way to go.
Fair enough. Tiffany?
So, James, the way I read this, they only get one wild card, and they, for like the three. And I guess I would like to, if they have two different elements, they could both qualify for that wild card slot. Let them have two wild cards and one other thing. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
But I think the way that I'm reading it right now, that would not be allowed.
That's a way, yeah. I've, I've looked at it both different ways, and, you know, is it kind of a gray area? You know, possibly, I could word it a little bit different, that, you know, you could have two of, you know, still two wild cards, and that would qualify.
Div?
Well, yeah, the way I read it is, we're going to have to pick an expensive one in there. That, I mean, you know, the brickstone, the covered entry, the porch, those are, if you're looking for a basic, you know, home, and all of America is looking for that right now. That throws it in there, if we have to do, pick three out of those.
And I could even see where color could be more than one thing, more than one. Does that make sense, too?
Use two colors, you cover two points?
I would agree.
Or maybe it's three colors and cover two points, or something like that, where it's like, and I don't know how to make that English.
I, I, where I'm coming from is I recognize where Dave's at, but also I like the list. And I think we want to, wiggle room? We want to, we don't want this to be like, you have to do this, but we have to get to a certain point, and give people a lot of different ways to get to that point. That, that'd be my inclination.
So based on that, if we want a little bit more wiggle room, you know, maybe the other design elements can just, you could have all three of them as other design elements, potentially.
Yeah. If there's all three good things that, you know.
Clarification, what, what now?
So if there is to be a little more wiggle room, instead of having to, you know, choose two of the, or three of, of, you know, one of each of those, for instance, the design elements, you could simply have three of them from the design elements, which also could be other options as well that's not even listed. So you wouldn't have to pick from, you know, you wouldn't have to pick from the first five if you were to do two. Both of those could come from the other design elements.
Mike, any thoughts on that? Going the right direction, you think?
Well, I, I feel so. I mean, you know, what we're trying to do is strike the balance between being highly prescriptive and really allowing the homeowner or the builder to develop, to, to, to design the, the house that they want, and, and hitting the general ideas of what you're after. You're after some, some visual interest, so that it's not either a rectangular box with a lot of, with a lot of blank space. You know, that's where sort of the window patterns and things can help make that a little bit more appealing. Or, or the, the Pentagon, right? Where you, where you have, you know, the, this large face. And so I, I think that's the challenge before us, and how best to do that? And here's one way of doing that. There could be others, if, if folks have got an idea on how to be able to tackle this differently. You know, what's good about the wild card, so what we're really saying is that other design elements may be approved by the zoning, that flips up to the top paragraph, and then you, you kind of itemize, here's some ideas. But approved by the zoning administrator sort of, sort of suggests a conversation at the desk, you know? Or when they come in for the building permit, you go, you know? And, and there's an opportunity to have some, some flexibility at desk before you, before things get too far down the path. So that, that language I kind of like, and where you put it in, and how you, specifically your wordsmith, it, just guiding people to that, to that point. So the reason we got here is, is not wanting to have just these large rectangular walls with maybe a window and a, and a door, and just a lot of siding of monotonous design or, or color or what have you.
Yeah. In a way, I think we're imposing a decision in the immediate thing, but what we're giving is just, you, you can't, you can't even estimate what, you know, these structures are going to be here for 30, 40, 50, 60 years, people are going to be looking at it. So for, to me, a little bit of inconvenience up front is probably worth the long run. I love the et cetera that we have at the end, too, because somebody may just walk in with something that we've never even thought of.
Right.
If it works, if it breaks it up, does some things like this. I was thinking of the house that my mom used to have on the north side of, just it was one of those kind of workman, kind of a cookie, the cookie house sort of thing, gingerbread houses, you know? But they put little things like half moons and things like this, just little elements, fieldstone, things like this. Just give people to use a little bit of imagination. I think we can get a long ways. Have we given you enough, James, to?
And I guess the only other thing, and maybe we have to, to make a motion, and, and so we had a formal recommendation, whether we want two design elements for all structures, or add that extra one for two-story structures.
I like adding an extra one for, to myself. If somebody would like to make them, we're going towards a motion. If somebody wants to make a motion out of it, I'd be open to looking, entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, let's hear it, Dave.
I'll make a motion of no more than two design structures.
Do we have a, sure.
Oh, we'll leave it at that.
Do we have a second on that?
Please, please repeat the, the motion.
I would like to make the motion of no more than two design elements.
For a, for a two-story?
For a two, for a two-story.
Okay, okay. We're waiting a second on that one?
Required.
Required, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Are we all clear on the motion at this point? Do, and looking for a second? If we don't see a second, I would be, then we'd be looking for another motion.
I will move that we move forward with two and three for two-story structures.
All right.
Second.
And we have a second on that? Any discussion on that?
I, I will just say that I, if we were being more stringent on you must include these specific things, I would want to be looser on the number, but I'm more comfortable asking them to do more, because we're being looser on what counts as more.
I, I can back that, I like that. Other discussion?
I'm opposed to the four of us deciding what somebody can build or not, and going to the full council. That's what I guess I'm ultimately opposed to.
I hear you, but it's also the nature of zoning, that somebody's got to make a decision. We do have zoning, so, but I respect that view. Any other discussion? If I'm not hearing any other discussion, I would say all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right, there we go. I think the ayes have it on that one. Where are we now, James? What else would you, what's next?
So the next one, just to make note, I did take off the language that was included about structural elements such as balconies, porches, and wall patterns for multifamily, and just included that into our existing one. Again, these are going to be reviewed as conditional use permits, so it just kind of gives some other ideas to potential developers of what could be included. So that was changed from the last one. I did add the glazing requirement into the code, so that was different from the last one. Exterior building materials, so this was discussed in the general industrial zoning district about metal on the, the front of buildings. As of right now, it is 50% can be metal, 50% has to be something else. So this one would be no more than 15% of a street-side elevation shall be metal. So, let's see, did I, did I word that right? Essentially, I'll have to look at it again. 15%, something else, 85% could be metal.
Okay. And that came out of our discussion?
That came out of our discussion about, you know, how things, you can look to our own streets, it, well, not, it'd be the police cold storage building, to meet this requirement, especially on these smaller buildings, it really was just 50%, I think, brick, and then 50% metal on the top of it. It doesn't really have any design elements. People are meeting the requirements, but is, you know, it's not really doing what it's intended to do at that point. So the, you know, the 15% of something else would be more of what you'd look at, you know, the, maybe the bottom three or four feet of, of what you'd have on a facade.
Discussion, yeah? It's not repeated.
James, just by reading that, it, it shows the other way around.
Yeah, I, I think when I just read that, I did, so we'd have to make that correction.
All right. Then I'm fine.
But that's, that's what, that's the intent of the, the ordinance.
Same point, Mike?
Yep, exactly the same point.
Okay. Other discussion? Do we have a consensus on this? I think we have a consensus on this one, so.
That sounds good.
I think we'll need a motion here. I think we're good.
So the next one, this is something that, we've been approached numerous times in the community development department about, probably I'd say at least five times since we've done the new zoning code, in the rural living zoning district, the potential for duplexes. I haven't really been asked about four units. Once you get up to three to four units, there are potential sprinkler requirements based on size, so, so that would be reviewed by the fire department, it could be a limitation. But have been approached a number of times, asking for a duplex out in here. Certainly, there's interest from, from the city of creating additional housing, and wanted to get planning commission's recommendation, should it only be single-family residential out in rural living, or should there be options for duplexes?
Thoughts in the group?
Uh, remind me again how the accessory dwelling units would fit in with this, in rural living?
So accessory, yeah, right now accessory dwelling units, if the person lives there, and that's a potential code change as well, but if the person lives at the structure, they could build an accessory dwelling unit on that rural living. The, primarily been approached about somebody buying a property, building duplex so they could live in half of it, and then rent the other half out. Which again, they could potentially have an attached accessory dwelling unit, but it would be limited to 650 square feet.
Okay.
Other thoughts?
Director Krambek, the RL1, there's probably a lot of that's unsued, right?
It would be, yeah.
A lot of it is, so there wouldn't be issues there as far as septics or anything to that effect, or?
Septic would have to be approved by the county in order to do it.
County would be the approval authority?
Yep.
I question, I, well, I think what we're, what we're doing is interesting. I'm not opposed to it by principle, but it would be bringing density into an area that we're not really planning on density, because we, we talked about having these neighborhoods that are complete neighborhoods and things like this, and I don't think these, these would, these would be somebody living out on the sticks in a duplex, which might be just fine. Other thoughts?
Fair point.
I'm going to go get cigs.
One of the areas of where we're talking.
Where do they go get cigs?
Um, I-
Yes, Tiffany?
Would there be higher requirements for septic systems to handle a duplex, versus, or?
They probably have to have a larger, maybe a larger tank, a larger, you know? But if their property accommodates it, then, yeah.
Yeah, and, and these are all pretty big lots.
Yeah, and, and obviously there's, you know, some, in the county you'll get large properties, large lake homes, there's, you know, even, you know, on some of the lakes, there, you know, these are running off of septics. You get associations, you know, you have large septic fields, so it's not uncommon in, in larger properties to have large septic systems.
Some of them are more effective than others.
Yeah. And, you know, there, there is a distinction between RL1 and RL2. So RL1 is kind of your reserve, so maybe you don't want to create too much density, it's kind of your, your areas that you're planning for future, maybe planning for future sewer and water. RL2 are really areas that are not going to see sewer and water. There's a lot of it north side of Wise Road that's never going to have sewer and water, and some of them are larger lots. So, you know, maybe there's a consideration for RL2, maybe not RL1. So something to think about there as well.
Dave?
To answer Tiffany's, it's absolutely, we build probably three or four duplexes a year. So it's all designed on the soils and everything else, so it's, it's a non-issue. I, I feel that the duplexes are fine, and these are outlying areas where there's probably no city sewer and water coming anytime in our lifetimes, would be my guess. So to me, the, if you want density in the, in the city, I think that's probably a good thing, and handle it.
I have a question for you, James. Real, real quick. Are there people who are looking to do duplexes wanting to build new duplexes, or subdividing, they're wanting to build new duplexes?
New duplexes, yep, that's who's coming. There's also, you know, there would be restrictions on place. They couldn't just easily come and subdivide another property, say in the RL1, based on what's allowed per density. So, you know, if they do have an RL1 lot, they could build a duplex on it, but they still need approvals from planning commission to subdivide, you know, say in one or more, two more lots, because the density's not set up for something like that, for them to create another lot, to build a duplex, and there's a duplex here. So there's a planning, you know, there's, there's kind of a planning process that stops it. It, it would allow them to build one duplex on their property.
I can personally probably live with one duplex, as long as we're not creating new neighborhoods that we'd ever intended to make.
Yeah, I, I do believe our density requirements in there for, from subdividing would, you know, kind of stop that.
Okay, all right, very good. Do we have a consensus on this, or would we like to, someone would like to make a motion? What are we thinking? Mike, do you have some thoughts there? You're looking hard.
Yeah, I am. Like, I do like, well, I don't know what I like. Never mind. You know, if we, if we could look at the zoning map.
That's what I was just going to ask.
To just, to see the spatial impact of this. You're looking at, the state hospital is RL1, up by the airport is RL1, and, and we're, and more of North Town and that. We're way, way north of that. We're picking up sort of that marshy embayment of Gilbert Lake.
Yeah.
Up, up towards Delmar and that area. Those are sort of the RL1 areas, and the RL2 is kicked more to the west there. We're pretty much at the junction of Beaver Dam with Wise Road, and then to the west.
Is that the lighter green? Is that RL2, the lighter green? Okay.
That's the only area I see.
All right.
And RL1.
Gotcha.
So to, to the, to the point with, you know, would we want to try and preserve our, our RL1 for orderly development and, and preserving the opportunity for density? Recognizing the RL2 probably is, is as dense as, you know, I mean, it's not going to get platted out because a lot of it's super wet, so it's mostly fronting.
RL1 is totally wet. It's not going to be dense. I've walked it.
Which now?
RL1, this will never-
The two, the RL2, the green one.
Yeah, that will never be anything in there.
So there, you know, the advantage of being able to put more dwelling units per unit area of developable high ground would, would make sense. But, you know, to your point, it, it causes me pause a little bit to, to think about whether we'd want to allow that on the RL1, or, or try and have development go through sort of the plating process to, to get the, you know, whether it's PUDs or some other land division process to, to develop. I don't have an answer, those are the questions that are playing on my mind. And I, and I should say Buffalo, yeah, Buffalo Hills clearly to the south there as well, that lively acres, sir, lively.
Lively auto area.
Auto, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question for James. Like, that lively auto, how far away from like city services is that? Is, if somebody hooked into that, because it is for sale right now, is that God services close?
So there's the one piece that's the kind of the, the very last remaining portion. Most of the 700 acres was purchased by somebody, and I don't know about that little piece, I'm guessing, I'm not sure on that one for services. You know, the lar, the larger portion that, that the person purchased, it's, it's ready at the end of Buffalo Hills there to be able to stub into, to city sewer and water. So that part's ready for development. And that's where, when you do have reserve areas, you do want to see that. Since we do have, I kind of alluded to it a little bit, we have certain number of units that can be over 40 acres in that area. So, so if you build a duplex there, you can't then, again, subdivide that 40 acres if you're going to be over your, over your allotment of dwelling units per acre. So that's kind of your, your stop on there, from, from being able to develop any further.
My, my question would be on that. So if somebody's bought 700, I know there's another 40, and it's, and it's close to stuff. I mean, I would assume who's ever got that's going to probably come forward and want more than that, and then we would be looking at that, and it could be totally different than what's up here.
Oh, that's correct. So what, yeah, when somebody, that's why you have it as a reserve right now, because then you don't want kind of haphazard splitting of lots in that area. You want certain lot sizes to be able to maintain sewer and water and not have to assess these properties large amounts of money in the future. So that's where you want that orderly development in there. So that's where they'd come in, request a rezoning, they'd be plating that area out based on what's allowed for the zoning district, and that's how a typical development would work.
So are we getting towards consensus? Are we, we're okay with duplexes on both one and two? Or do we want to make a distinction between that, RL1, RL2?
Firstly, I don't think it's going to matter.
Okay.
I just think that R2 is, if it's, that's all that's going to probably be. The acreages are just going to be bigger out there.
Okay.
I literally walked those properties. They're so wet. And the ones down here, they're probably going to come forward anyway, and something will be different when it's happening. I doubt if anyone's going to throw a duplex out there.
I strongly suspect you are right. But I think I would like to see us, maybe we do it permitted in rural living two for now. I'm a very cautious person naturally, but so I would just want to see how that goes. And maybe put it on the itinerary for two years from now to reevaluate for rural living one.
Do you want to make a motion on this?
I will make a motion to do that, that we make it permitted in rural living two to do duplexes and come back in two years.
You can remember two years?
No, that's why I'm looking at James. He's going to remember in two years.
Hey, all right. James, is that making some sense?
It is making sense, and it still would provide an opportunity for somebody to rezone to rural living two. Say there's some property in rural living one that isn't all that developable in the future, not near services. Somebody could ask for rezoning to rural living two.
Okay. Do we have a second on Tiffany's motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? All in favor say aye.
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 All the same sign? All right. What you got left there, James?
So that's everything within the proposed ordinance. The last thing, it's come up a few times in some of our business retention visits for the EDA, also in some other discussions, on the memo that was provided by staff. I alluded to potential surfaces for driveway, storage, and parking in the general industrial zoning district. Right now, the off-street driveways, off-street parking is required to be paved by asphalt or concrete. A lot of times, there'll be maybe small additions that need to be done. You know, there's maybe a large Class V parking lot existing, and in one instance, there's a business down there that's looking to add maybe a little turnaround to their existing Class V. Well, we don't really have a provision for something like that in our code. Anytime you add something, you know, you have to meet the code. You could request a variance potentially, but then you have to figure out a hardship that's not related to cost. So wanted to have the planning commission discuss this. You know, staff certainly sees, you know, FedEx wasn't one of the newer ones built in the industrial park. You probably wouldn't want to see their parking area in the front, you know, be just a Class V parking area. Certainly, the main entrances or entrances off of our streets, they can't be Class V. We don't want that dust going into our storm sewer systems, so you have to manage that. Something, you know, there's a lot of times there could be maybe a turnaround around a building where a semi needs to go, maybe a storage area. There could be requirements that you have to treat it with. I can't, I don't know the exact chemical, but they put it on Class V roads in the county to make sure that the dust isn't too bad on there. I think it's some type of chloride treatment that gets sprayed on there, so that could be an option. Another option is maybe if you do want to extend it or do some type of Class V or crushed concrete, maybe there's a conditional use permit process through it, so it is reviewed. You know, I'm sure one of the reasons it was put in the zoning code to require concrete or asphalt is, you know, maybe in the past, and at times when I'm down in the industrial area, if you have a 35 mile an hour wind day, you're getting a lot of dust blowing. So I think there needs to be some consideration for that. But, you know, do some of our, you know, just utility roads for it or a turnaround area, does that have to be concrete or asphalt? Or when somebody's doing a, you know, a small extension to their existing Class V, does that have to be concrete or asphalt? So maybe there's an opportunity in the code to, you know, look and see how that, you know, could maybe be changed going forward. So, answer any questions the planning commission has?
Thoughts, Mike? Any thoughts on that one?
And this would be separate, separate from the design standards, correct? This is a.
Yes, not really tied to design standards. It's somewhat, you know, it's still your site design standards. I probably would put it in a different ordinance, but wanted to have a little bit of conversation with it on design standards tonight.
So we could explore this a little bit further without necessarily holding up the design standards. I think what I, what I would like the future to look like for the city of Brainerd in a warming climate is to have as few blacktop surfaces as possible, you know, and so to mandate large parking areas that may be, you know, radiating a lot of heat during, at the end of a sunny summer day. Is it necessary to have that there? Or can we soften that somehow, either with imperviousness or something that's not real superheat absorbing? And probably the easiest way to do that is with maybe the Class V or the underlayment kinds of gravel surfaces that compact. And you focus the improved surfaces on those high-traffic areas, you know, where most of the traffic comes into the building or around the loading docks and things of that nature, or your approach to public roads so you're not carrying a bunch of mud on the tires and then, you know, throwing that out on it as you drive off. So I would prefer that we don't push too hard to pave everything, and so where's that, where's that balance point?
Tiffany?
I, yes, and I guess I also want to have us be open to other options than asphalt. And I know concrete is just ridiculously expensive. But we're dealing with a lot of, a lot of dust and dirt already in our streets. And, I mean, we've had it come up in council meetings, and I know there are other people in the community that have talked to me about it, and how do we keep that down? And I'm not convinced that Class V or crushed concrete is really the right solution. But as technology improves, and I think it's going to have to, I want us to be open to other options.
Very good. I don't think we have to have a final answer tonight, but I think if you can come up with a definition of saying zones adjacent to or some sort of, some set of definitions, I think it could be something that could work.
Or if you can invent an entirely new thing that won't generate heat island effects or cause dust in our streets.
Dustless Class V.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
You know, and if the issue is largely wind-driven, wind breaks. You know, so plant vegetation as a tool, which would also help with stormwater management as well, particularly if you're directing that into the planted areas. And so it could be, could be a simple combination of, you know, minimizing the asphalt and the heat island, the heat retaining and radiating surfaces, and then places where we can use vegetation to infiltrate water and to slow down wind so that the dust doesn't go flying. It could be patterns like that. If that were to help, you think about.
Sure. So I think at this point, let's come back to that. Are we good with that?
That sounds good. So I think I have direction here. Is there any other items, design standard-wise, that planning commission would like to discuss?
I'm good. I think we've covered a lot of ground here, literally.
Sure.
Lot of areas. Good. All right. If we are good with number six, we are moving on to number seven, new business. There's no new business. We're moving on to number eight, public forum. The chance for citizens to express, talk about items that are not on tonight's agenda. Would anybody like to opine? No? Anybody online? All right, well, I better open the hearing, or the forum. I'll open the forum at 6:38. I will close it at 6:38. We are on to staff reports. James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've got a few items here. There'd be a special planning commission meeting on October 21st at 5:30 PM for a CUP request for a bulk storage propane tank that'll be in the industrial area, industrial zone district. City council at the next meeting will be considering advertising the Brainerd industrial property that the city of Brainerd owns for a dollar per acre if certain objectives are achieved by a business. This was a recommendation by the EDA. And then at the last city council meeting, the city council did direct staff to begin working on a comprehensive crypto ordinance after completion of the design standard ordinance, so I'll begin researching that. I believe at the next planning commission meeting, what I'll do is bring kind of a final draft of the proposed ordinance, which will also include the graphics that I'll have to edit as well for some of the garage standards. Have the planning commission review that one more time to make sure there's no mistakes made. I'll go through everything, and then if that all looks good, we'll bring it as a public hearing at the next meeting after that. And that's everything I have.
Any questions for James? My other question is, on the sale of the industrial park, certain objectives, are these economic objectives, design objectives?
One of the big ones is the number of good-paying jobs that the business would potentially provide, whether it's, you know, maybe an expansion from an existing company in Brainerd or a new one coming to Brainerd or wanting to retain a good business in Brainerd. That's really where it's tied to. As of right now, they didn't set a number of jobs. Some of that's going to be, you know, have to be looked at by the EDA and city council based on maybe how large the property is. Is it one acre? Is it five acres? So it's not a set number, but, you know, I think from what the EDA discussed, they're open to hearing if there's a business interested. You know, certainly have them work through that process.
All right, that helps me understand that. Number 10, member reports. Let's start with Tiffany.
I have nothing.
All right. Mike?
Couple things. Number one, I like the idea of jobs per acre, and if we can also do kilowatts per job, we would have it. I had, I had an opportunity to chat with somebody who's with the Green Step Cities program last week, and they're newly hired, and their principal task is to work with outstate cities, us, folks like us. And, you know, we look at our comp plan and under facilities and infrastructures, our strategy to promote energy efficiency and use of renewable resources. And, you know, the action that we would do, it takes strides to complete applicable strategies in the Green Step Cities program. And I think that program went into, it was started in like 2015-ish, somewhere in that neighborhood, and so it's been nine years in the makings here, and I think we were one of the early folks into that. But I don't know how far we are down the steps. We may still be on the landing. Looking to step down. So I would love to see us go there. I don't know what the entry point is to that and whether planning commission is the right entry point. James, you kind of signaled.
Yeah, so I believe we're at step three right now, and we're close to step four. Some of the staff turned over. That was some of the things that I was going to have assistant planner work on at the time. We do have a temp staff now that worked in a planning department. She does work probably two days a week. It's my plan that she's going to kind of work on that throughout the winter time here, as it was directed by city council at one point. So I think we are going to hopefully be starting that this winter again.
Outstanding, and I think it's really encouraging to know that there's capacity within the program to assist, and they're looking to prioritize, you know, where they're welcome to work. Be able to help cities like us to then go forward on some of the next steps and getting us towards that goal that we have of energy efficiency and use of renewable resources. So that's all I have.
Very good. Dave?
More of a, can I make more of a comment?
Sure you can. Comments, questions, whatever.
Well, it's on the news, course of presidential elections and the housing shortage that we have, different solutions that are out there. And as, you know, local citizens like ourselves, what I'm thinking, and I'm coming from the builder's perspective of it, I see that we have two issues. One, city of Brainerd, I don't know how you can do anything about, and that would be a worker shortage. You can throw all the money you want at it, but I can't build any more houses because I have no help. And that is throughout this country right now. So that one, I don't know. That's probably the biggest one that's got to get solved that we can't. The second one, as you probably are starting to realize, is government involvement. Really does make a difference in the housing industry of how we design things. And that's my perspective, and that's totally just my perspective, that I think we have to be cautious when we're doing designs things. Yes, we want a nice community, no doubt about that. But I know of contractors, many contractors will not work in the city of Brainerd or Baxter because of the rules that are in place. I do. It's not an issue. It is, it is a little more constricted than we can build something outside of the city limits less expensive. So my point is just be cautious of what we do as far as designs. And if we want affordable housing, we're going to probably have to open up a little bit, I would say, in some of these areas. I realize that's just my comment.
I appreciate your point of view.
Thanks.
Well, I've got nothing, so I think we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Look at the comment.
Yeah, exactly.